All right, this is a continuation meeting, but we're still going to rise for the pledge, please.
Which extent?
One danger.
Our nation under God. Justice for all.
Okay, we left off with administrative reports, but I'm going to... I have something that I wanted to talk about, and it's in the... This is too low. It's killing. I can move it away if you want.
You have to speak a little louder, Andy.
I know, I'm just waiting for them to fix the microphone.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right.
Is that better?
All right. Yeah, I think so. Okay. This is called a point of personal privilege, and what this is, is under Robert's rules, and the right of... The council members have a right to address the council on a question of personal privilege, and it's basically something that affects the council member's integrity, character, or motives, or directly affect the welfare of councils as a whole. So I'm just gonna... It says four minutes, and I apologize, but last meeting, a good deal of time was spent misinforming the public about my actions and attacking me personally. So I'm going to explain what I think happened, and everybody can make their own lines up from there. First, I want to apologize to council and the public for letting the meeting get away from me last time. The floor must be obtained before speaking, and only one person can have the floor at a time. Speaking back and forth without obtaining the floor is out of order. Second, attacking people or their abilities instead of debating the specific issue is also out of order. So I should have called a recess and... And to end that. The Chapter 30 ordinance amendment presented in draft did just not pop up without warning of discussion, as claimed. It came out of our last executive session. It was brought to council's attention that the ordinance called for the borough manager to attend all meetings, zoning, planning, et cetera. So the amendment was written to cure that, because we don't do that anymore, and we have not for 15 years. In addition, all council members but one at that meeting agreed the borough manager should be able to send a subordinate to council meeting when required. So the ordinance addressed that, too. It is true, as was brought up, that when the borough manager is absent, I am the borough manager. I give the borough manager's report. I do not become the borough secretary, and I do not take the notes, and I do not replace the people the borough manager leaves in charge at the office, and I still am the chair, and I still vote during times like that. Ordinances and resolutions are drafted for cause and presented to council for approval to advertise. This is done all the time. It's recognized, and it's in accordance with Robert's rules, and there is nothing wrong with this. Last meeting, we approved three resolutions we had not seen until the packet, and two ordinances for advertising that we had not seen until the packet came out. It is correct that in large wards, the chair does not make motions, debate them, or vote. Robert's rules has boards having less than 12 people, like this council. The chair may debate, make motions, and vote. So there was no foul, and nothing wrong here. I've made motions before, and I've always debated, and I always vote, unless I recuse myself for a reason, like, for instance, the VFW, the one time I did. It was said I was trying to sell the Borough Manager Amendment, and I apologize if it appeared that way. The ordinance came from what multiple counselors wanted. The vote was unanimous minus one, indicating its overwhelming support. My discussion was to be transparent to the people of New Freedom so they would know what was going on. Of note is that the counselors informed me that they were approached and asked to vote no before the meeting. While this is not illegal, it is certainly not the same as the maker of a motion stating why he or she thinks it should be approved. That is just normal business. It was stated we needed to look at the whole ordinance, and copy should be passed up. We should all note that we, as counselors and all citizens, have a whole ordinance on our phones and computers, and we had time to look at that. The grandstanding makes it look like I was doing something wrong or hiding something. It was implied, actually stated, that the lease provided by the borough manager was not good for the people of New Freedom. I have never done anything in this office that was not for the good of the people of New Freedom, and this council, everyone up here as a whole, votes every vote for the citizens of New Freedom. If anyone thinks otherwise, it's because someone is misleading you. Finally, I want to thank all the council members and public who spoke to me and offered their support after the meeting. In the future, let's debate the facts of the issues, not people. And last, but most importantly, I live with you people. This is my town, too. If you see something that I'm doing up here that you don't like, ask me. Don't trust other people to tell you what's in my heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item up is the manager's report.
Okay, everybody has a copy of the manager's report for the month of August 2022. Most of the items, we actually covered during the last meeting. Just a couple items in there. Just an update on the key box ordinance, the Knox box. We have been receiving almost all of the forms back from the business owners or property owners that were sent notices to comply with the ordinance. We've been meeting with those property owners on site to select the location of those Knox boxes, and then it's up to the property owner or business owner to schedule that with the fire chief to get those locked up. And so we are moving in the right direction with getting everyone in compliance with that ordinance. We've spoke about most of the legislative action items that was handled at the September 12 meeting. Refuge contract was updated as well. So other than, I believe we're going to discuss some of the sewer group actions. I believe that's pretty much everything on the report, unless anybody has any questions.
Talk about the sewer group now, or you want to wait?
I figured if we could do that under the sewer reports.
Okay. Yeah, it's fine. Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Oh, you want to... I guess. Sorry. Do you have any...
Yeah, this is just... Yeah, so, looking at the 2023 budget, provided you with from the packet on the 12th, which is just a preliminary summary, I will tell you that since the meeting on the 12th, we received information from just a couple vendors on some things, as well as obviously the police budget preliminary figures as well. So the figures in here are fairly solid. There are some changes that we've made in the last couple weeks, but that final packet will come before the meeting on October 17th. So you'll get that the week before, and that'll be the entire draft budget for 2023. So just looking at a couple things, as we discussed, the first real budget meeting will be October 17th. At the November meeting will be the second budget meeting, and at that time, as long as everything aligns, we'll seek tentative approval by giving authorization to advertise that budget. December 2nd, our required 10-day inspection period begins, and that's the time that anybody from the public can come in and look at that draft budget and redo it. And then at the December 12th meeting is when council will move to approve... Or should approve the budget and the tax ordinance, if there's not an increase in tax mileage that can be by resolution instead of by ordinance. So the next page that you have is just a kind of high-level summary of the 2023 budget, starting with the expected fund balance going into the year, adding in your revenues, subtracting your expenditures, looking at where that puts us as far as surplus or deficit in that fund, and then looking at available fund balance. Your committed fund balance is 16.7% of revenues that are expected for that year, and that is in your fund balance policy. So those numbers that are in that line, the committed fund balance, are pretty much locked in. The only things that we remove from that are one-time payments, so if there would be grants, or if there's money received from the state, such as the foreign fire tax insurance, we remove that out because it doesn't really apply to that situation. And then the emergency repair fund is only in the water and sewer accounts at this time. And as you can see there, we are looking at a pretty significant deficit in the general fund as far as going through the year. It's not the fund balance running a deficit, but just the annual revenues and expenditures over revenues. And what that comes from, just to summarize that again, we'll get into this during the October meeting, but we will have remaining ARPA funds that we'll be using for Stormwater Project. That's approximately $100,000. So when you're looking at that number there in the deficit, you want to really back off $100,000, because you're not matching revenues in the same year as expenditures. So those revenues were received in '21 and '22, but you're actually expending them in '23, which shows a deficit or a use of funds in that year. There will be... Your 2021 general obligation note is a tiered repayment schedule, and that ramps up in '23, so your increase in debt service is around $95,000. You will see that in the general fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund, and we'll talk about those a little bit more. At this time, there is an estimated increase of about $70,000 for police coverage for 2023. Additionally, with the proposed changes for fire and EMS, there is about $71,000 increase for those services. So when you really add all those up, and you look at where did that deficit in expenditures over revenues come from, that's over what deficit amount is shown there. Does that help to explain?
Uh huh.
Because they may have questions on that summary page.
Andrew, I have this question. If someone from the public wants to come in to review the draft budget, must they review the draft budget in the office, or are they allowed to make a copy, or have the copy made and take it with them?
Usually, that draft budget would only be... It's a working document until it's presented to council. So after the meeting where it's presented on the 17th, yes. Once it's presented to council and public session, it becomes... They would be able to do that, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Anybody have questions so far? Okay, the next couple pages are just a summary of the different funds. As we talked about, general fund, looking at trying to make up that deficit. It did propose an increase in general mileage from 1.85 to 2 mils. That increases your tax revenue by about $40,000, and the average assessed property in New Freedom paid $31 more annually. So basically, $2.50 a month, approximately.
And that's enough to cover?
Yeah. This was just an interim step, and that's really up to council, and we can plug those numbers in as we get into budget discussions next month.
I got a quick question.
Sure.
The removed street lighting electricity from general fund and put in highway, is that because it's going to be funded differently?
No, that's just a way to reduce that deficit. So you're pulling approximately $50,000 out of the general fund and putting it into highway aid fund. Paying street lighting electricity out of highway aid fund is an acceptable use of liquid fuels.
Okay, that's about the one. So you can use liquid fuel to help fund it?
Right. It just means you don't have those funds to do road projects.
Got you.
And you don't... You can do that in one year, and you can move it back the next. It does not have to be for a certain period of time. It's just a suggestion to try to reduce that number. Thank you. I think pretty much everything else we discussed regarding the general fund. The next is just a chart. So out of every municipal tax dollar, this chart just breaks down. So in this case, basically, you can look at it, it's 45 cents of every tax dollar goes for public safety, 13 cents goes for roads and streets. You get the idea.
Public safety is police, fire, EMS.
Police, fire, EMS, yeah. Questions? Okay, page three, refuse fund. Obviously, we will have a veteran idea on that once we open bids. The projected refuse fund, I added 25% on both the cost and increase in user fees. I don't... That's just a number at this point. Obviously, that can depend on the days of collection, the number of days, the type of...
But that's reflected in the summary?
It is.
Okay.
Yes.
Andrew, are we going to get... Receive bids on twice a week collection and once a week if they're altered it?
We are, yes.
Okay.
And we're also going to receive bids on multiple years, as well as...
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's a why, whatever we end up agreeing to go is directly billed to the consumer.
Yep.
By us, yeah.
Yeah, that's not a moneymaker for the borough.
Right. No, but what I'm saying, it's not like we're going to get more of a deficit if that goes up. It's just that people have to pay more or less.
It's a pass-through, yeah.
The only way we're able to reduce that is on a recycling performance grant. So the more that residents recycle, the more money we can request from BEP, and that helps to offset that cost, so...
Is that actually a measured number, when they pick up recycling?
So we can do a push or something like that to encourage that?
Inga here. This recycling, can we have that just once a month? Would that cut the cost? Trash wise, you know, on Friday? We have it on Fridays now? We only have it once a month instead of every Friday?
But, you know, we... There's a lot of... I see people put out a lot of recycling on a weekly basis. Again, if you go to a monthly basis, they're going to accumulate a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
If I put it in the trash, because you don't have any place else to put it, until recycling day, we're going to do it once a month.
I think I would encourage people putting stuff in the trash.
Well, it was just a thought that people could perhaps, you know, store it, get another container or something to save a little bit of money, you know, in these times as I was... Yeah. I'm just asking a question. You know, I don't know, I just threw it out there to touch the trash a little bit.
Yeah.
Kind of funding on the trash.
If the prices come back and council wishes to rebid, that could be something that looked at this point, but at this time, the contract's out, and the haulers are already pricing those options, so...
Well, I think, okay, all right.
Andrew.
We do... We're going to do a newsletter, I guess, beginning of the new year. I think that's probably good idea, to put in a newsletter to let residents know that the more they recycle, the better it is for the borough as a whole, that we may receive more money from recycling if they recycle more.
Yes.
Yeah, that's good.
I was going to ask Andrew, you know, remember we talked about the garbage truck, I said garbage truck, but the trash pickup? The new way they have that they can pick up, that it takes less people, and remember that one that has the automatic?
Yeah.
Are we going to consider that, or...
That is considered in the contract, yeah, as an option.
Because I don't know, that would... I wonder if that would make it more expensive or less? I mean...
It would make it less the challenges is downtown, and having those toters placed at a point where the operator of that...
I can see that probably would be...
Can gain access to it, yeah. So that's where it costs the problem.
Are they that much larger than what some of those big trash cans are? I mean, people have to make it accessible now to be able to get out between cars. Is it going to be that much?
They do, but I can tell you there's places that the thrower, we want to call them, has to go in amongst cars and kind of go out around and grab bags and things. So that's where the problem would lie, in switching everybody, or switching to completely automated. So it might be the fact that we all said... They usually send two trucks down. It might be that one's automated and one's a driver and a thrower, so... Which could save, in the long run. It's honestly a lot safer as well.
Andrew, also, we talked about the large trash pickup, because we talked about... We call them and let them know that there's going to be something, you know, to pick up. Would we be better off taking and going back to like we used to, where you had like... You didn't have a large pickup every week, you had one every so often, where they could come around with one?
A lot of the haulers will tell you that it's more work for them to do a large item collection quarterly than it is just to do it weekly because of the costs involved, because normally they would do that on weekends, and then they're paying overtime, and it's a lot more to have on staff and just to... Plus, it encourages people, if they have something, they can put it out and get rid of it, and it doesn't end up accumulating somewhere. Thank you. Yeah. As far as water fund, basically, again, we're just trying to still realign all those accounts, and that's in all the funds, to make sure that we're aligning expenditures with the DCD charter accounts, and add and remove that as we see fit throughout the year. We talked about the increase in the 2021 general obligation note from the water fund as well, and we'll be pulling the remaining amount of those funds for the South Third Street water replacement. That project's basically ready to go to bid. However, we didn't want to bid at this point, so we don't have open trenches throughout the winter. So that's something we would hope to bid early 2023, so that they can start right after the snow stops.
Has there been any communication with York Water on how they...
I'm not able to get anybody's...
Okay.
What would be the next step for something like that?
Stop paying. Yeah. They'd probably call if we were paying.
Maybe even notice.
Can our solicitor write a letter?
No, we did talk about that. I was hoping that I could try to get an answer, and I have not been able to.
Our solicitor wrote a letter.
I think that... You want to put that in a motion?
I make a motion to have our solicitor draft a letter, send it to York Water to address the main hookup.
What's the letter intended to say? What would you like the letter to say?
That's up to the solicitor.
Well, we... It would say that we want to discontinue using their service, I think, is what we discussed. I think what we want to do is discontinue purchasing water and use it as an emergency hookup, and there's probably going to be some fee associated with that, but I'd rather pay a small fee to have a valve in place than to be forced to buy water that we don't need.
Because right now, we do it every night.
Just so we get in the letter what we intend to say to the York Water company, so that they can provide a response, you know?
Can I...
Company would be pretty direct about it.
Can I suggest that we make a motion to have the solicitor draft a letter to be approved at the October meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I second.
Well, no, there's already a motion. We just need an amendment.
My motion was to have him draft a letter, draft it, send it.
Right, just to bring it back, draft it, send it, right. Okay, now we're still good, then. Why don't we just have him draft a letter for the October meeting?
I'll second it.
That's fine.
Okay, I have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
My vote is also aye.
On the sewer fund, again, as we mentioned, we're increasing that debt service from the 2021 general obligation note. That is an interesting situation, and I can try to explain it now ahead of the October meeting, but if you recall, that 2021 general obligation note refinanced a portion of the 2012 general obligation note. The approximate amount was about $460,000 that was refinanced out of the sewer fund. There was an additional $3 million that was borrowed for the sewer fund in anticipation of the needed improvements at the treatment plant. However, that is basically a line of credit, so we are not paying interest on that $3 million because we did not pull that $3 million yet. However, the debt service schedule is... Was prepared in anticipation of pulling about a billion of the $3 million at a time of closing or within the last year. We didn't need to do that yet because we're still in the planning phases. So the debt service payments have increased to reflect that. So in two years, we will have all of that paid off if you stick to that schedule, which the only way to not stick to that schedule is to go back to the bank and have them redo all the amortization schedules. And I really don't think that that's necessary, because we're going to need to pull those funds going into next year. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
So if we're not to pull anything, rather than a five-year repayment, you would have it paid off in two, but we're going to need to pull things, and it'll still go to the principal, so you're still reducing the amount of interest that you're paying over the life of that loan. It's just calculated differently.
Yeah.
It's not a bad thing, it just drastically increases your debt service next year.
But it acts as a savings account that we'll use later.
Yeah, because you're not going to be paying the interest on that money.
Right.
So because of that, we're looking at a small increase in sewer fees. At this point, it would be about, again, these are preliminary, about a dollar per quarter on the base amount, and about $2 per 1,000 gallons on the overage. So the average user would pay about $10 to $12 more per quarter. Questions on sewer?
Yeah, I think maybe this is a good idea for the newsletter, to let people know that I'm certainly this is the rule with regard to the waste water treatment plant that we have to do, i.e. upgrading the trivia. I mean, it's okay right now, how it's capacity, from personal capacity, we're having to meet these new requirements, which means improvements in treatment. So, but you know, it's a sort of, oh, people, like, Mr. Porter, you know, there's reason for it. There's just getting out of cash, you know? We don't have the choice. Somebody's already made that choice for us.
Correct. Sounds like we have a lot for the newsletter in January.
Yeah.
Which is good.
We...
Yeah.
Well, better news, we'd probably have been better.
Moving through Capital Reserve Fund, again, to continue to fund that... Moving through Capital Reserve Fund, again, we continue to fund that from the general water and sewer funds. And we're looking at the purchase of a backhoe. That is the oldest piece of equipment. I believe that's a 1987 backhoe. And we kind of went through that when we looked at the Capital Reserve Fund, that it's definitely time to replace that. As far as the Recreation and Community Center Funds, we're just looking at adjusting those figures based on actual participation in 2022. The Recreation Fund, that really depends on the status of the near municipal agreement. So we'll be looking at two separate Recreation Fund budgets. And just keep that in mind that if we're able to move through with everything and join the two recreation bodies from Shrewsbury Township and New Freedom Borough, that that budget will be tweaked a little bit. Highway Eight Fund, basically, we'd be looking at about $100,000 worth of street projects and then bringing in that approximately $50,000 from the general fund for street lighting electricity expense. Questions on the summaries?
Is that because of additional streetlights or because of?
That's just a measure to reduce the deficit in the general fund.
I'm assuming they just don't know if they own lighting from our.
We actually got, last week, we received bills from MedEd for those updates. So that's another step to getting it done, so that means it's made it through the engineering department, made it to the billing department. We received the bills, paid the bills, so now they can schedule the work.
Okay.
Which is good. I think October will be a year since we brought that up, so.
So you're saying I feel like we're coming up on a year.
Yeah. Which will reduce that expenditure.
Yeah, because it would be, the cost, the initial cost to replace them would be paid off in two years, right?
Yeah, it was like two and a half years.
Okay.
We've got Pam before they do the work.
Yeah, because they have to order all the fixtures. Again, you're only paying for the fixtures that didn't meet their.
Standards yet.
Yeah. The majority of them were replaced for free. The last bit of information, and you'll see this again in your draft budget packet, but this is a tax rate comparison of the boroughs in York County. So you've got 36 boroughs in York County and what I did is broke them down by population estimate, median household income, and then their tax structure over the last six years and the five-year percent change. So obviously, New Freedom is highlighted there in red. The ones in the 2022 column that are highlighted in red include a tax millage or fire tax millage. So on top of the general tax millage, that borough also has a fire tax. So that's why you see New Freedom's at 2.13 instead of the 1.5 that is assessed for general purpose.
I mean, I think it's interesting to make a comparison between us and other communities. New Freedom and West York are about the same size and they're considerably higher than we are.
We give a lot for what we charge, I mean, for what the people contribute. The public works and the rec and everything that we're giving to the people is significant compared. This could be something that's in the newsletter too.
Questions? The only other thing that you have in your packet is just a, we received this from Co-Stars regarding the road salt contract. In 2022, the price per ton that we were able to lock in was $67.99. You can see the increase for 22 to 23 season is $79.55. Still a savings by going with Co-Stars, but obviously, as we're seeing across the board, there's increases everywhere.
Thank you. President's report, I don't really have a whole lot. I did want to make a motion that we add the RK&amp;K wastewater treatment plant update to our agenda. It's not going to be significant, but it needs to be at least discussed and brought up at this time. I would need a second.
I'll make a second.
Any discussion?
We can do that.
Yeah. It has to be republished, but it's not an emergency item, but it's a time-sensitive item because we have to, what do we have, two weeks or something now from today to make a decision?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to make a decision on the upgrade to the sewage treatment plant and it has to be done before the next meeting.
And that's what we discussed at the, our last meeting.
Right, right, exactly.
Okay.
Right.
We were just hand-rolling this and haven't had a time to digest it or read it or anything.
Well, it'll be presented, so you'll be able to ask questions and we're not going to necessarily vote on approving it tonight. I just wanted it introduced so people would have a chance to look at it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. My vote is aye. And we'll bring that up, put that under the wastewater. Mr. Ray?
I think everybody has copies of the Police Commission Report for last month. I don't know if there are any questions. We targeted time. We were under for last month, but we happen to be over for the year. Do you want me to get into IGA that's not on here, but?
I'm going to let, that be your call. I think at some point, we have to discuss it. And it's coming up pretty quickly, so.
Andy and I have been back and forth with the Finance Committee. I feel that we're having a problem with definitions. Obligated activity, incidents. Everybody wants to use a different terminology. And I think what we need to do is IGA, you know, has to come up with a definition that coincides with the understanding of the police chief and the police officers, which the terminology is not the same. Right now, Finance Committee has met. They're approving a budget and it looks like we will be going towards about an eight percent increase, which is going to be about $80,000 for us. Well, it was 70, I think it's seven percent. Now, we're a little over. Okay, now it's $70,000. We're still not sure where Glen Rock is on when it comes to being a member or purchasing hours and the department or the commission is still trying to figure out how we can do that. We want to keep Glen Rock on. We would like to see them stay on as a member of municipality. But I think we're fast approaching their top-line budget. I think they were, this coming year, 2023, listed at $340,000. That's going to be, it's going to be a tough sell, so we'll have to see what that committee comes back with. There is a committee that is meeting with Glen Rock to try to work this out. We'll see. I don't, you and I discuss that. Do you have anything to add to the IGA and our?
I guess I just have a question. If I go back and I look at last year or the year before, whenever the last recommendation was from the chief, did he, if you add up all of our monthly incidents, is that what he based the PPU's on in years past? I think he tweaked it somehow.
He did tweak it as to increase in incidents. If we had an increase in incidents over a three-year period, he chose to assume that we needed additional PPU's for adequate coverage.
That's a good assumption.
You know, and we kind of leave that to him to know what the state of policing in the municipalities needs to be. I certainly have said several times that I would like to see a little bit more community-based policing. Hopefully, you know, we can request that, especially if we have our, have hours down several months in a row, have him go out and have an officer, you know, approach the kids down at the park, talk to them. I know it's happened in the past. One of the officers went down to the basketball court. It looked like a pig pen. He said, "Come on, guys, we're going to get together. Let's clean this place up." And in about five minutes, they had all the trash picked up and put in the trash can, so I, that's a wonderful thing for them to be doing for our community and I appreciate that. It does, it does.
Outdoorship is important.
If you look at the SROs over at the school, they've done a fantastic job developing relationships with the kids at the school. And I want them to do the same thing in our community, to be able to go to a police officer if they have a problem and not be afraid of police. They're their friends. They're there to help. But we need to let the kids know that. If you can see the report for the balance sheet for last month, I don't need to go into any of that unless somebody's got a question. We, do you remember anything that came across on the on the balance sheet that needed to be addressed? I think K-9 unit has been, the new cars paid for in full, out of donations. That's, that K-9 program is all run by donations, so please keep that in mind. We do not put any money into that. Every now and then, we'll take some out of the general fund and replace it with the Police Commission. But I know, getting into the commission, North Hopewell, as you mentioned, I think in our last meeting, we held a moment of silence for the family over in North Hopewell Township. We got a lot of kudos from the state police, which we usually do not receive. They thanked our police department because one of our officers was in the area, responded right away and took the assailant down. While one of our other officers could get there, I think he was there in three minutes. So we basically kept a bad situation from getting worse and we received commendations from the state police for that. And I thank our officers for being there doing that, even though it was out of our direct jurisdiction. Chief brought up the fact that there are a lot of scams going on. Gift card scams at CVS. I didn't quite understand how they do it. They try to buy one for $50 and then say, "Well, now I want $100." And then they don't give in the one that was already done for 50 and they've gotten thousands and thousands of dollars from, and doing this, not just CVS, but a lot of different businesses. We've had some grandparents scams. We had a family that fell for this. They apparently called and say, "Your grandson's in trouble and we need bail money, $18,000." And unfortunately, people fall for it. They just send them the money or give them a debit credit card. And we had one family, I think it was in the tens of thousands of dollars that they paid. Please be aware. Make phone calls, be protective of yourself. Stewartstown and New Freedom did hold a stress management seminar. They brought in folks from an organization, the child that drowned up at Summit Grove. We had a lot of police officers, fire department officers that really had some problems dealing with that and I think we had a great number that attended that. We appreciated the fact that they could be here to take care of our EMS providers, our fire department and our police. That's something that we don't want to go through again. We are still short an officer. We have had three to four applicants, all from Maryland, either city or county, and they are looking diligently to fill that position because as long as they don't, everybody ends up paying overtime and we really don't want to do that. And chief has to go out and cover shifts and some of the detectives just don't have the time to do that.
Do I have any community type placing when you're in a stressed out situation?
No, absolutely not. MMO, we did have a major MMO contribution that had to be made in the commission. I think it was about $183,000 for MMO. Now hopefully, we'll get a rebate back, but as we all know and as I'm sure you've seen, a lot of insurance costs are going up, workers' comp's been going up. And they're going through the same thing and they really don't know if there's going to be a rebate that we can depend on for next year. Budget really looks good. It's pretty much finalized. As soon as I get a copy, I will email that to all council members and Andrews so that you so that you have that and you know exactly where all of those funds are going to. That's.
Car break-ins?
Well, yeah, today I got a call from chief. There were a number of car break-ins. Apparently, there were several vehicles that, what they were doing is they were traveling down our streets. Other, I don't know if it was kids or adults, but other people were following the cars and if they saw a car and it was open, they rifled through the glove box and whatever they could change. A lot of people came out this morning to find their glove boxes open and their consoles open. Several things have been taken. I would ask you to please. South Schaefer was hit pretty hard. Shrewsbury Township was hit. State police and Southern Regional are working together on this. We do have ring doorbells. We have video. That's all I know at this point because it's still under investigation. If there's anybody out there that has cameras, ring doorbells, please go over that footage. And if you see something early morning, this morning, 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock in your neighborhood, save that and call the police so that they can come out and get video of that. I did hear one of them. I did hear one of those vehicles perhaps was a white SUV, so if you see that. But all I can say is please, lock your doors. I know we live in a small town, but we have people that come in from Maryland, from Virginia, from New York and do these things, and then they run off to another area. They did it with the catalytic converters. They went from Chambersburg to Shrewsbury. And just keep an eye on your cars. If you hear a car alarm, check it out, even if you know it's not yours. Take a look. I had a conversation with one person today, a lady that thought she heard something, and she went outside to check it out. I don't recommend that. I recommend that if you see something, if you hear something, call the police. Don't decide to check it out and take matters into your own hands. We don't know what type of people we're dealing with. You know, chief said at the meeting, 85%, and this shocked me, 85% of the crime in the area is drug-related in one way or another. And I have a pager. I see, I get notification every time there's an overdose. And you can't believe, after COVID and everything, how bad it is. So we really need to watch out for our kids. Take a look for changes in attitude, changes in their demeanor, their friends. And don't be afraid to check them out, you know? Check their phones. I just had a seminar, you know, you probably pay for the phone. It's yours. Check it out. Check the texts. Check where they are on the internet, who they're talking to. I know that's a hard thing to do, but it's very important and it could really save your kids.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, the only other thing that I may have, we've been having a problem again with fireworks. I think I know where it's coming from. I can't catch them. It's somebody that lives on Constitution's going down to Morris Goodfell Park, setting off the big ones.
It's not any of my grandkids.
It's not your grandkids. Nope, it's not your grandkids. I guess that's about it. The tables, I will say, we had a conversation today about Tasteful Occasions using borough's tables when they go out for functions. And I think, Andrew, you're going to handle that? Send a note that they are not?
I'm gonna talk to them about it and see what's.
Okay, because we did have a major problem with those tables not being cleaned. I appreciate and thank your public works, guys, for going up there, power washing them, so that we can rent that out, rent the tables out, and make a little bit of money without complaints. I know your new leases have said that they must use table claws, table coverings. From now on, when they rent the building out, that's good for people to know. I understand that our risers have been replaced. Am I correct?
Correct. Okay. And they need to be requested by the organization or the individual renting it. We will install and then review. That way it takes.
Have we received them?
Yep.
What was the cost on that?
They were, for the stage, the risers, I believe it was around $4,000.
Are they like four by eight?
Yeah, they're actually four by, they're four by four panels, and everything folds up. It stacks on a cart. It has a cover. It can be put up by one person, so it really eliminated the storage issue, number one, the weight issue with the old stage, and the risk of injury from anyone really handling those.
How big an area will that cover? You can put a band on them?
Yes.
Okay, because we've got a lot of events coming up, I know. So thank you for taking care of that. I appreciate that.
Anybody that we talk to now that's renting the auditorium, we let them know that that's available. They just have to let us know if they need.
Okay, thank you for doing that. That's something that probably should have been done a long time ago. That's all I have.
On that, making contact with a person with a lease, I would request that it is done in writing, that a lot of these things that are happening are, well, I'll talk to them, something like that, and there's no record to my knowledge, right?
For things that were done in the past?
Well, I think the lease, the lease actually specifically says that contact is...
Everything.
Contact is supposed to be by registered letter, so.
So I would like everything documented. Wonderful.
If that's what it needs to come to.
Well, wait. You need to oversee the leases and ensure compliance, right, with the leases going forward?
Correct.
I don't know that that's done adequately with verbal conversations. That if there are ongoing issues or any issues, that they need to be documented and put in a file.
I'm confused about what you're asking. Are you asking for the current leases? Because it sounds like they are being documented by saying that they don't have use of the tables. If we're signing a lease with somebody that...
That's verbally. That's all just verbally.
The tables are gonna be put away from now on. They're gonna be stored.
Well, everything, just like for the emails that went around today, for the one camp sent with the picture and the usage of that room, that's not supposed to be usage. And in the past have said that, well, you know, when things are reported, I'll go talk to them. I stopped by. I went down and I looked. There's no, you need a physical record of all of this. And I'm just asking that there be written communications, not just verbally, going forward for all leaseholders.
You're saying that, you know, if somebody wants tables, it's documented that they got tables?
If the senior center's leaving the door wide open from Friday night to Sunday, not just had a call and say, "Oh, you know, don't leave the door open at you get ready at that time." You know, write a letter. We've been notified that the door was left open. Please make sure that, you know, the building's secure, whatever it is, whatever, you know?
I understand. I know there's been several.
I'm not trying to make light of that, but I mean, what do you do with all the letters? Like, let's say the senior center leaves the door open three times. What's the next step?
Three times in a month? I don't know. That's right. I don't know. But what has happened? We don't know because everything's verbally.
You know, everything has basically been kept on a cordial basis. I mean, we would tell the senior center, "You've left the door open," and hopefully, they would get better in it. We would monitor it for a while. But there's not, you know, there's not anything that's going to, you're not gonna take away their key because they left the door open.
I'm sorry about the key, and why isn't a letter cordial?
You're saying if we have a phone conversation, follow that up with an email as per our conversation, blah, 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 and then we have a record, correct?
Just like today. According to the lease, they shouldn't be using the auditorium area. They should receive a letter. It's been notified that you're not supposed to be using the auditorium area. It's not in your lease. Please do not use it anymore, however you want to say it. But now there's documentation that they've been, it's happened, so if it continues to happen, it can be addressed, whatever the issue is, whoever has a lease.
What email does this, if something came wrong today, you said?
I just, I sent it out. I sent it out because the pickleball players this morning walked into a real mess. Apparently, Tasteful Occasions had an event, I'm assuming Sunday, came back probably late, and they just threw everything in the gym. I mean, there were dirty dishes.
But first of all, they didn't come badly. They didn't throw everything.
I'm assuming.
Okay, but well, but again, you see, I think what we have to do is when something happens, well, for instance, let's say you were parked in the center of Constitution, and the police came by and they said, "Oh, you know, you're parked there. I'm gonna give you a ticket." But maybe you had a heart attack. Maybe you need to find out why you're parked in the center of Constitution. So what happened was, they had an event. The person refused to pick up on Sunday. They stacked everything as neatly as they could up against the wall tight, and they knew it would be gone Monday morning, which I guess it was gone Monday morning? I don't know what time. I didn't ask.
What wasn't in the morning?
I know. They were let, the problem is, is they have, they had a new person who was picking the stuff up, and he didn't come through on his end of the deal. So they got stuck holding all that stuff. So it wasn't a thing that they were gonna, and again, I talked to Kim because I wanted to find out what was going on. And she said, "In 11 years, they haven't really had it where they've had all the stuff out." You know, this was just, they switched vendors who are picking stuff up, and that's what happened. So I said, "Okay," and she said she wasn't gonna let that happen again.
Yeah, that's fine. That's why I wanted to answer your attention.
But I don't have a problem documenting, and we can send emails to the senior center or Tasteful Occasions or whatever, and it can be documented. I just don't know, what are you going to do when you have all, you know, let's say you have 42 pounds of documentation. You're not gonna take away anyone's key. You're not gonna kick them out. You're gonna tell the senior center they can't be there anymore because somebody left the door open?
I don't know what you're gonna do, but it needs to be addressed. I mean...
I agree. It needs to be addressed, and it's addressed by sending them an email and talking to them. That's how it's addressed. And we hope that, and under normal circumstances, people are cooperative, so that's how the Borough Office addresses them.
Yes, by written documentation, not verbal conversations.
Sure, and it can be followed up with an email, conversation.
Good question. Just want to understand. Are we gonna make the phone call and then follow up? Or is it just gonna be sending them a letter?
I think you make the phone call and you follow up with an email that says, "Per our phone call, you left the door open on Monday night, and, you know, it's very important that the door be secured because we don't want people coming in. We've had a string of robberies and whatnot, so we don't, you know, we don't, we want to make sure we protect our property."
But we're gonna make a phone call first.
Yeah, phone call followed up by an email referencing the phone call, unless somebody objects.
No, I think that's a wonderful idea. I mean, in business, that's generally the way you do it.
And put them to their lease file.
Well, we have a copy.
The documentation. Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? Engineering?
It really didn't have, worked on much during the month of August, so there wasn't a report that was provided for.
Do you have an update on the slide 15, Phil?
We're working with that with Aero Consulting. They're working on a, basically a summary to say that hydraulically, whether we need to keep that tank in operation or we need to replace it, or if we can just completely remove and use the plug-in thing. So they're working on that information.
Trying to save some money.
Trying, yeah.
That'll actually come down to DEP, though, right?
If we can provide all the documentation and all the modeling works out, we'll provide that to DEP for their review and then see what happens.
Okay, wastewater treatment plant. Sorry, I didn't mean to skip a little bit. Any questions on the water report?
So the solicitor is gonna draft a thing. That's what came out of that motion. So the solicitor is gonna draft something to the next meeting?
I think, yeah, we know what. So we made a motion and we put RK and K on the agenda. I'm gonna summarize what I think are really important points that came out of the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. I have a review with you, so you may not like it. Anyway, couple of things. The reason that our, I don't know if you can say that. Anyway, the reason that our treatment plant is operating at the current capacity it's at is because of the Chesapeake Bay water requirements. So what we've decided to do is come up with a final number for both Shrewsbury Borough and New Freedom Borough for EDUs. And what we've basically made this statement, and it is a public statement, and Shrewsbury Borough is also going to make it in their meeting, but basically, we have enough EDUs for all of the building in New Freedom Borough, and we have enough EDUs for all of the building in Shrewsbury Borough, but we are not going outside of our own respective boroughs. Is that a fair statement? So in other words, if Shrewsbury Township needs 10 EDUs to put in the development, they may not get them. They probably aren't going to get them until we go through some upgrades to the plant and bring the capacity back up. And this could have been done eight years ago, but it wasn't. And it wasn't because at the time, there were a lot of, you know, housing market was laying down. You know, people were getting laid off, and so we basically put a patch on it and said, "We don't need it right now, so we don't need to upgrade it right now." We still don't technically need a ton of EDUs, but we do need to bring the air up in the plant, and that's what this RK and K proposal is for. It's a first step to bring us our capacity up so that we have a safety margin in the plant for our own EDUs, and we are, it's going to be sized so that if we get an upgrade request from Hopewell Township and Shrewsbury Township, that we'll be able to not have to replace those blowers. We can just use the blowers that are in there and upgrade the rest of the plant to come up to a capacity that we might be able to satisfy the needs of Shrewsbury Township and Hopewell Township. However, that upgrade would be paid for by the townships. That wouldn't be paid for by Shrewsbury Borough.
Anybody that comes after.
Comes after this, yeah.
Where are we with capacity at the plant now? I think we were at, let's, 67%? I mean, I know you have to take into consideration, we get a heavy storm. They're over 100% capacity, but during normal flushings.
Yeah, the plant is currently rated hydraulically for 2.25. On average, we're receiving 1.3, 1.4 million. I just wanna look here what.
But that doesn't mean we have 40% capacity left that we can utilize.
Correct, yeah. The average in August was 1.1 million, but that doesn't mean you have 1.1 million gallons available. Some of that's allocated, especially when you use the 350 gallons per day for EDU.
Yeah, I think that's been important to relay because some people just assume that because we look at it that way, that, and I think, I commend the committee because Erica and I took a lot of heat and the brunt of that on the IGC and getting everybody together on the same plane, and I thank you for getting that done. Shrewsbury is very thankful. They always say they are very pleased with those meetings and how they're going.
So Shrewsbury Borough approved the initial upgrade. Actually, they haven't quite approved. In fact, they've approved it. It has to go through their formal approval, I guess. So what we need to do is also approve it. It's already budgeted. It's already in our... our, um, our, uh, line, pulled out against.
Yeah, in, uh, in the 2022 budget, we did include expenses relating to Phase One improvements, uh, and with, with everyone's approval, we can start that still in '22, but not to the full extent of the cost that was budgeted, so a lot of this will carry into 2023 budget, and that has been included in the summary that, that you received in the meeting packet. Basically, this is, the proposal you have in front of you is just for Phase One improvements, that cost needs to be paid by the current members, so that being New Freedom Borough, Shrewsbury Borough, and Railroad Borough.
Railroad Borough has also agreed?
Correct, yeah. And this is basically to increase plant, uh, treatment efficiency.
If we come to an agreement of some kind with North Hopewell and Shrewsbury Township, is any of this something that we can pass on to them?
I think at the time that we start discussing, uh, those two townships becoming a part of the treatment plant, I believe that the group understands, and those two townships understand that there needs to be buy-in for.
Some are very, when they bought into the police department.
And you have to look at it, depreciated value of what those improvements have been over the last, you know, the, that all has to be a calculated amount that they would pay to buy into the plant that would go back to those number, the current number.
Yep, that makes, makes sense, good.
We're, we're not there with, um, Hopewell and Shrewsbury Township yet, they're, they're going off and they're putting engineering, um, data together to map out the EDUs that they want in their individual municipalities, and come back to us with a map showing, and right now, they have a ballpark, kind of an idea of what they want, but it's not necessarily accurate, so we're waiting to get that back, and we'll have that back sometime, I think, mid-October. Yeah. So we're progressing. Yeah. What did, give me the total, I mean, that's 2.?
The, including, I think you wanted just construction estimate?
I don't know, just for Phase One.
Yeah, construction, not engineering.
Right.
Yeah, uh, construction for Phase One is estimated at 2.2 million.
And that would be split approximately?
The way the agreement is worded right now, uh, Shrewsbury would be paying 61.72%, uh, New Freedom would be paying 35.55%, Railroad being 2.73%.
Yeah.
And this is based off the usage?
This is based off the current agreement for capital projects.
It's actually contractual, um, the, uh, Shrewsbury Borough has kind of initiated discussion that they may want that to be closer to 50/50, um, based on the, based on usage, but the actual capital improvements are not based on usage, they're based on what people bought in for initially. And Shrewsbury Borough, and without, without any bias at all that I can, I'll try not to put any bias on it at all, but what they're actually saying is, we don't really have the capacity to give them what they bought, which is true, because Chesapeake Bay, um...
But, but that only came about after the agreement.
Exactly. So one could, one could say that they should be just paying what the contract says, and someday, we may get back to where the capacity was. Right now, to open up a wastewater treatment plant, you have to have zero discharge, like no nitrogen. I mean, you could buy credits, but, you know, still, to have a new plant, you, you basically have to have no nitrogen, no ammonia, you know, you have to be, basically have to be putting out drinking water.
Yeah, the federal government is already calculating how much phase intolerance, how much, uh, VOE, uh, nitrogen, phosphorus, etc., the base intolerance, it has numbers that are fixed, uh, and it backs up to the, all the treatment plants that contribute, and, and they all get assigned amounts, a maximum amount they can contribute to those, those, uh, and that's it. If you have a, like you said, if you have a new treatment plant, want to put a new treatment plant in, you're gonna have to discharge, essentially discharge drinking water, or go buy credits from someone whose treatment plant does such a good job treating more whatever frame, or ammonia nitrogen, or phosphorus, or VOE, or suspended out, it goes beyond, it does a better job than their, their permit allows, and, and they can sell credits, and, you know, that's the only way you can do it, if you wanna put a new treatment plant, discharge and send new water, of course, as part of the Chesapeake Bay water system. I mean, it's fixed right now, that's, that's it. Store's closed.
Yeah, correct. So if you wanna expand anything in Southern York County, you pretty much have to come to, you know, Stewartstown, Glen Rock, or New Freedom Wastewater Treatment. Probably not gonna get a new plant put in.
Yeah, but because we're already in existing, you're not gonna get to zero because that technology's not capable with an existing plant?
Correct, it would just be, it might be, it might be capable, but it'd be cost prohibitive.
Okay.
I mean, you'd have to have so much filtration and so much, I mean, just be cost prohibitive.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, we could, we could increase the, I don't know, capacity by treating plants, 2.25 MGD right now, let's say, uh, someone wants to, uh, someone EDUs, really to purchase EDUs and pay the expense, excuse me, 2.5 MGD, that's okay, but now you're gonna, you have to squeeze out more nitrogen, more phosphorus, more VOE, more suspended out, those, those concentrations have to come back, so that your total pound, that you discharge of those parameters stays the same. So of course, if your, if your volume's gonna go up, and your total pounds have to descend, the concentration that you're allowed to discharge has to come down, which means a higher degree of treatment, and, you know, what, filtration, and then, what, hey, I mean, yeah, I suppose, my prepared, I can do this, it has to treat a plant that, uh, improve the discharge quality, uh, against more and more expensive account, uh, it can be done, but, but, gee.
This really is all so I can have a crab cake, so that's important.
Yeah. I, I mean, you know, since we're sadly agreeing to that, crab.
I'd go for crab cake right now.
Didn't, didn't John say when we, when we were at the meeting, that if they went to go further, closer to, uh, that 2.0, was it 2.3?
2.25, yeah.
And, um, he said that I'd have to get a whole bunch of new permits and that, so he can actually step that up to that, because it would change.
Well, he, he, yeah, we're talking about going above. If we, let's say, uh, Hopewell and Shrewsbury Township came back and they said, we want 2,000 EDUs, now we've gotta change tank size and capacity, and now you're looking at millions and millions and millions of dollars, I mean, so, yeah. So do we need a motion to make to tell them to continue or delay?
Uh, it, it would help to align with the other.
Well, Railroad and Shrewsbury Borough have already approved, could, uh...
Yeah, but if Shrewsbury was gonna, going to talk about it last week, or, I can't remember, you said last week or this week?
It should be done by, you know, yeah.
At their authority meeting, they're gonna talk about it, the Borough, and...
Yeah, and it's about, it's, I mean, I, I, this is really the, the only solution to this, uh, again, the money's already budgeted, and the, uh...
They didn't talk about this at the Borough meeting.
I'm sorry?
They didn't talk about this at the Borough meeting.
That was gonna be discussed at their store authority meeting?
So, and, uh...
Right, authority is first, and then, or Borough for next month, yeah.
Yes, we don't need to do anything, they still haven't talked about it with their Borough, right?
Well, you don't have to, um, and they actually, the agreement says that New Freedom makes the improvements and decides, and the rest pay for them. We're trying to foster better relationships to make sure everybody understands where this is going and where this is headed, so that's why we took it to the group. Ultimately, New Freedom can just say, this is what we're doing, and the rest are gonna help pay for it.
True statement.
Either way, it, it has to be done at some point in the very near future, we have to initiate the process, uh, to keep this moving in the right direction.
Do we have, is there a time limit on the proposal?
I was looking, I don't, usually there are 30 days, uh, which would put this past the next meeting.
September 16th.
Right, the next meeting's October 17th.
They said we'll be voting on it, but would you be more likely to motion to vote on?
Well, that's what I was asking, do we need to do, do we need to move forward? I wasn't trying to lie here, I was just trying to, trying to figure out what we need to do.
Don't know what's in it, vote on it, and if it's good, or I don't know?
Well, your infrastructure committee knows what's in it, I mean, Bernal, Dennis, and myself have been going to these meetings, we're presenting it now to you to make a decision.
So this is what we would be voting on, but we haven't yet gotten a chance to look at it? I think that's what you're, well, yeah, a week away.
I just don't want the...
What are you going to review in here that you're going to have a different opinion on based on knowledge of the wastewater treatment plant that needed upgrade?
I have no idea, because I haven't backed up to the, I don't know, that's why, I mean, how do you know, how do you know which don't know?
I don't know.
It's the, it's the committee's recommendation that the council... It's the, it's the committee's recommendation that council accept this, this is what John Smith, who walks on water, as far as I'm concerned, recommends, and this, it's not, there isn't like an alternative, and it's not like we...
We've been talking about this.
Right, and it's in the budget, I mean, we budgeted for it, so I mean, it's, yeah, why we, you know, we could do that. I would entertain a motion.
A motion that we accept the RK and K, um, plan for wastewater treatment capacity improvements.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? Does this have to be done by resolution already? No.
Professional services.
Yeah.
I just don't feel there's adequate time to give them to review, so that's why I decided.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 No. I, that is I, motion carried.
Did you?
Sorry?
Did you vote?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear it. Aye.
Thank you. It's kind of also, just as a side note, wraps up any developer wanting, you know, to tell Shrewsbury Borough, we have the EDUs, because they don't, they haven't enough to build on what they have currently.
Every month, that happens.
Yeah, but it won't.
So we did our calculations for New Freedom as well, so we have our number, they have their number, we're both on the same page, which I think is great.
But we do have EDUs. Oh, yeah, 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 we have 299.
I don't care how many they have, that's...
They have 260.
66.
66, right. Zoning and code enforcement?
I have one thing, uh, number 16, I got done.
You're on the current report?
Yep.
Yes, I did.
So that's, uh, ahead of the game.
Yeah, now that was regarding the signs placed out at the road, another letter was, um, kinda getting ahead because we're back a month here, but another letter was sent in September regarding the other sign.
The one that's signed, yes.
The neon.
Yes.
Okay, good.
So I agree, I agree with Ken, those signs, those signs on the road were really strapped.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was just an accident waiting to happen.
What, what was the time that those lights were able to be on during the day?
I didn't think they were.
Was it 10 or 11?
From what time to what time?
They can't be on, I believe it was 11 to 6, I'd have to look up in those zoning ordinance again, that they have to be off, but either way, they're still in violation because it's a limited sign in the residential district.
Yeah, I thought that's what we did.
I'm at 6:25 this morning, I provided that picture, lit up like Christmas.
In other words, they didn't turn them off before, when they closed last night.
Right, they, yeah. It's, it's in, it's in the zoning ordinance, so I think I explained this last time as well, that zoning ordinance requires that you make some kind of effort to be in compliance within, within 15 days, any of, 45 days to...
Lit up like Christmas.
45 days to fully comply. So they, I will say, they, they complied very quickly with the initial letter that was sent regarding the signs placed out at the road, so I would anticipate that we will get compliance with the second letter as well.
When does the second letter go out?
I believe the 16th.
16th of September.
Yeah, and that'll be on the September report.
And very, obviously, we all know we're on this, uh, there's one issue on here, it's 43 East Franklin Street, and it's about a vehicle that's stored there, is that, that they're not, that they, that's not, that's not over, I think, because it's still there.
Correct, that's... It is at the magistrate.
Okay, because I had different people approach me, and, and people are complaining about that because of the, the grass about this high and the...
Right, and you actually see that on the second page as well, because they were sent a letter, complied, they got banned again, they were sent a letter, and now we're at the magistrate.
Can I ask, put one in for the lumber company coming into town, you know, all those telephone poles are cut line crazy high, and the weeds are taller than that, it looks horrible, all along there coming into town. Can that be addressed?
By Man and Parker?
Their property, yes, all of them, you know those telephone poles?
Do.
Like across from Weathersfield?
Yeah.
All, like, right from there, where like home start, the weeds are taller than the telephone poles that are cut, is that their property?
It is.
Is that just, it's their property?
Just not we own right of way.
It's behind the telephone poles.
Oh, I didn't know, I know exactly where you mean.
Yeah, it's just...
Well, they're still responsible for mowing the right of way, right? So that can still be there, still be there.
All over.
And they do have new ownership, I think, right?
Yeah, didn't they just transfer again? They just sold again, right, in the last, within the last six months?
Yeah, 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 Man and Parker is...
Sun's tightly coming into town.
Not Man and Parker, it's somebody else, I guess they kept the name.
Yeah, 22, um, well, let's go to picture nine, I don't wanna give names or address. We still have the... Okay, we, we've, I thank you for taking care of a lot of that. But we still have two junk cars there, now that you build a nice garage, none of the cars are in it. And we still have two junk cars there. Is that nine, yeah, nine. Nine and ten, it's that property. You know where I mean, Andrew Wray?
Yeah. They're covered. So.
Is that, no wait, if you have a car covered, unlicensed junker car covered, is that.
I guess playing the other side, how do we know that they're unlicensed and they're not?
I don't think they're both covered.
Hope they were, could be wrong.
One's a car and one's, uh, two other cheap.
Box here, yeah.
Tom, I'm not gonna get picky, at least he's, I don't have to worry about the recoming.
He did, we've hit that property pretty hard over the last, I mean, he's complied on every, on everything that's been said. We'll take a look at it.
He's, the problem there, if you look at picture ten, the problem there is he cut it back. He would've been better off to just dig it up or cut it off because it's gonna grow back again in three months. That's one of those things that just grows, it is, it weeds, basically. But I guess we'll, we'll with that when it, ten and eleven, when they grow back, because they've already grown back about eight inches. Okay. It's doing a good job, we'd appreciate it. On the, uh, VFW post on land development, are the additional accrues native the DEP, the?
Yeah.
And the.
That's the NPDAS from the, the HOP.
I have a question.
Uh-huh.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Number, number one cross street for me, tonight, there are two cars. The, the backed into trees with the license plate is the back. Is the trees are backed, the cars are backed into these trees during the night, sometimes they get moved around. Should I go over there maybe take a picture or?
No, no.
Because I'm sure that that's illegal, isn't it? I mean, they're obviously, they're in the backyard, they backed, backed into the trees so that you don't see the, the license plate.
Yeah, I was there a month, a month ago when they were backed into the shrubs.
Does this only happen at night?
Well, yeah, that, yeah, sometimes there's three cars getting backed up in, into, into the trees and then they move them. Right now, I think there's a white car, yeah, it's a lot of activity during the night. Now, I, I should I call the police department at that time when these, these cars arrive?
I was there, it was a red car.
They're parking, they're parking them on their property, I, I don't think that the police department would be able to enforce anything that would happen.
But, but, now what I'm saying is, it's on their property, but the division between their house and the next house, there's a row of bushes, big tall bushes. And for you to drive your car onto your property, the backyard, and then to back your car, your, half of your car is in the bushes. Now, what is the reason for that? To me, is to hide the, the license plate. Because otherwise, I mean, you know, there's parking plates on the street or the side. I mean, they ever done a lot that they split with the neighbor next door. But why would you, why would you run a car and then move the car, then all of once another car appears and it's, it's backed into the bushes?
I, I would say it wouldn't hurt to call the police department and report that, that that's occurring, and then.
You know, like, I'm, I'm, I'm alive, oh, usually they're awake at night. Now, when I came home, I, I figured I would maybe call them and, and then they can check this out.
Yeah, I think that's a good.
It's a lot of activity, starts about, um, one, two o'clock in the morning.
That's a good idea, though, I think you probably should call, call, let the place know.
I don't know if I should, you know, it, it's, I, I just think it's suspicious, why you would back half of your car into bushes?
I would call the place, let them handle it.
Okay. Yeah, I guess it's better because I'm, yeah, I'm by myself here. Without pepper spray, that's. All right, I was just wondering, because it's, it's, sometimes there's three cars, sometimes two cars. Then we have a motorcycle, then we have activity in the garage, it's all, all at night.
Yeah, if, if, if you'd like to follow up with the police department and then I'll speak with Wade tomorrow and, and we'll discuss other.
Okay, could you, because something definitely, we've been, one time in the summer, the beginning of the summer, police officer, I don't, I don't know if it was Sergeant Schmuck. Stopped by and I talked to him and he was taking photographs when the, when the cars were like in the front yard. And he said, just talk, yeah, I, I leaned into the window and spoke to them, you know, because they were, they were home. And so from, from that time on, then they, they started going in the backyard, backing the cars into the bushes.
Okay, yeah, let us know how that works out.
So that's a good, that's okay, I, I, I'll just go ahead and call them and, and see, you know?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I'm really not anxious to go over there by myself, you know?
Yeah, no, yeah, please, yeah, please don't, yeah, that's not a good thing.
Yeah, I won't do that. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Recreation?
I think everybody's had their reports, so if anybody has any specific questions, I do wanna say that the, the sponsorship for the concerts was Creston Industry for fifteen hundred dollars. Eden Tool, for seven hundred and fifty, are a consultant with five hundred and Kellaground for five hundred, so we thank them for their generous donations. Sorry, is there any other specific questions?
Do, do they, anything else happen, I wouldn't make the last deal, anything else happen with the cornhole people that wanted to?
I mean.
Kind of join up with REC and?
No, it's just that he was interested, I think it's gonna depend on if he wants to run it through REC or if he wants to run it as a, I guess, a separate business. Would depend on what he, how he wants to do it, and they would need to get some more information on that.
So as of now, they're not, as of now, they're not using the community center? They're just setting up in the tennis courts?
Yeah, and they, and they had the understanding with, with REC that if anybody wanted to play tennis, came along, that they would then vacate the courts.
Is it easier to do that for other things, just put them in the grass?
Uh, somebody mentioned that.
They want the lights.
Well, yeah, they wanted the lights to, to play at night when it's a little cooler out. But he also said something about not putting his boards down in grass or dirt.
They're very expensive, you said?
I don't know, I bought my voters that.
It's not professionals.
Any other questions?
Anything on, on business development? Kind of talked about EMS and fire funding when we were talking about the draft budget. Is there any updates to that? I don't know any, do you?
No, I was out of town, I didn't make the last meeting, I know that was their budget meeting. I was out of town for a wedding.
I think, I think we just proceed with what Jim Mustard gave us.
Yeah, now they are having, they are having a Halloween bingo.
Yeah, I saw that.
They, they were in touch with you, now they're not selling tickets.
You changed it, though.
Okay, you changed it, that's cool. So, everybody, Halloween bingo.
It's a cash bingo, too.
Cash bingo, yeah.
Good stuff. Infrastructure, we already discussed, sword water, you touched on roads. So any questions or anything on infrastructure?
Is the park, is the park considered infrastructure?
Well, we have an item on pickleball court installation, but did you have something, a specific question?
We're just an observation, it's nothing that can be acted on now, but I mean, the, the basketball court fencing is, is coming apart. And there's, you know, if you look, if you look at it, somebody's trying to, they're trying to take it apart.
Oh, oh.
It's been like that for a while. The other thing is, I mean, I spent a long time in Ranciardi and at the bandstand, and somebody had been, there's, there's pieces out of the stairs there going up, somebody had taken chunks. Is that something, we did, or?
Uh, no, I know, I, we had a public works employee that took the rails and they were gonna start making those repairs.
Well, that, okay, that's, okay.
I didn't, hadn't heard about the basketball court.
If you look at the basketball courts, you can see where they've been trying to take them apart.
Yeah, they're climbing them.
You think they're just climbing on them and breaking them, or are they actually trying to?
They're, they're unhinged.
Does, does, do the cameras face over that direction? Say yes.
Yeah, close as west, at the wellhouse, but it's not gonna be able to pick up. Could we have the same issue with kids sporting on the tennis? You can see them, but you can't, you can't make out faces, so. Again, we, we could probably see, we, well, first, we would need some kind of narrowed down date and time.
Right.
And then kind of go from there. You could get a general idea of what they look like, but it's not gonna be clear enough to be able to really pinpoint that person.
Is it? I, I know we, I don't know whether it was resolution or ordinance. Is it possible, we gave chief permission and allow him to be able to access. But could we have during the day or when officers are there, can they hook that into the screen that they have so that they can?
They, they have that now, they can pull up the cameras.
They can pull it up, but they don't have it, they have to actually pull it up. Right now, what they have, we have cameras on all of this building, and there are different, I think, six different screens. One screen with six different shots. Is, is there anything we, we could do that for the police that they can keep an eye on towards? Or?
Uh, I would, they have, they have access, I would think they would need to call CIA alarm and be able to lay out their screen like that. Because without the, they either have to put another screen in or lay their screen out to have.
What does everybody think about?
Ten or twelve different screens.
I mean, it's not on the agenda, but it would.
Think it'd probably be a pretty low priority for a police officer. And they're not gonna monitor a playground during the day.
Well, there's, if there's, they're in there, they, they monitor what they have there now, and they have that specifically for a, a transfer, you know? People buy things online, there's a spot out there that you're supposed to go to, that they will, you know, keep an eye on you. If you notify them that you're gonna be doing an exchange, so somebody's.
They am, that's an notification, a specific.
I, I just wish there was some way, other way we could.
Why, why don't you ask chief what he thinks of it?
Okay.
That would be a good thing to do.
If they already have the feed going into the, into their location, they should be able to put it onto the.
Sorry.
Kim, are we gonna get charged for PBUs if they do that?
No, not quite, it becomes an incident.
I don't think so, I mean, Glenrock, Glenrock is putting in a bunch of cameras, they're having the same problem in their park. Shrewsbury is doing the same thing at their park. I'll, I'll, I'll check with the other mayors too and see how they handle it. I, for a while, they might have a feed over here for, for everybody.
Check with chief.
I'll check with chief and see.
It's worth it if he, if he wants, you know, if he has, he has the manpower.
Yeah, what's the cost of a screen and then next to nothing?
Andrew, have we had any, have we recouped anything from the cameras that damaged to the park? It's been like a year, right?
Yeah, not to date, no.
And we do still have the signs up? And you're under surveillance?
After, yeah. You had something on pickleball court installation, I believe?
Yeah, we, warehouse has been working on that, and, and that's kind of in conjunction now with the master site plan. They did have a contractor give a rough estimate based on the drawings and all the specifications that were made for the pickleball court installation that we previously looked at. Uh, the price for that was four hundred thousand dollars.
I, I don't understand that, because like Ross paving was gonna put in two cords for.
Yeah, I mean, this is.
I wouldn't have the element of the playful.
This is, uh, building that area up, it's putting the stormwater improvements in, you gotta meet your current ordinance now. Uh, it's, it's the surfacing, the fencing, the lighting, getting ADA access to it, so it's, there's a lot of grading involved. There's some smaller work that needs to be done, not even in relation to that impervious area, but that's a discharge area right now for the wellhouse. So it's, it's possible, uh, but again, remember you're dealing with prevailing wage rates once you get into a, uh, project of that magnitude, so.
Why don't we fold it into the master site plan and see where we come out with grant wise and?
That's the smart move at this point.
Personnel, Brian and I got together and talked about the, what we were gonna put in for the budget for wages, salary increases for next year. I mean, everybody knows we've been looking at eight, 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 eight and a half percent inflation. A review of the literature showed that companies and other nonprofits are putting in five to eight. So we put five percent as a placeholder in the budget. And of course, we'll talk about that when we get to the budget. Public safety, I think we covered everything with the. Sesquicentennial Committee.
Yes, I, I think I gave you that, my little bit of information, I don't know if anybody has any questions, but one thing I do wanna say. At the Freedom Fest, it was well received because people liked their shirts with those emblems on it.
Yeah, I think, I don't have any questions about your report, but we got some, we got some feedback at the truck zoo, actually. But we need to kind of define the dates and come up with like a tentative schedule so that we can put that out and people can see what they're interested in helping with. So maybe you could come up with.
Yeah.
A schedule of events, what day we're gonna start, I guess the actual date is in July, right?
Well, the, that, the parade that they were, we were talking about is, they're gonna make that part of the one we have. Around the Fourth of July, you know, that's when that would start. But then the rest of it, I wanted to try to keep everything in the month of August, that, that was what I was trying to do. I'm gonna talk to Mary Ann and see, we were talking about having a concert in the park tied with, and find out what day we can do that. Maybe, maybe that'll give me something to work around that I can.
NCR is interested.
Yes, I got it.
And help me out, Myra Gellis is interested in helping out. So maybe for next meeting, we can have like a tentative schedule, I mean, it doesn't have to be etched in stone or anything, but just some kind of schedule we could start talking about. That'd be cool. Anyone have questions?
So, so you're, I'm sorry, Dave, go ahead.
Just an suggestion, I mean, if you're gonna, if, if those different people are interested, it, at some point, it might be a good idea to, to put a, if you're gonna have a meeting, get all, just invite everybody, so everybody can share it.
You could use the council room, I mean, you know, just set it up with Andrew and.
Yeah, 'cause I think I'll, because some of the people, I wanna try to get together with them, because sometimes they're hard to get a hold of, so I would like to get a hold of them so we can get things. So I have some idea of what, of what dates I can use, because right now, sometimes I get, you think you do, but then you don't.
Well, it is, it is hard, I mean, we, we tried to put together a dance for the VFW and found out there were other activities on that date. I think we had a, VFW had a car show, there were other car shows within a week of, you know, either side, and, you know, so, yeah. Really is hard with all the activities that are going on in all the different communities.
Are you looking to possibly do this in conjunction?
Are you looking to possibly do this in conjunction with our regular Fourth of July parade or a separate parade?
They were, how did Mary Ann say that?
Well, I think she said that they're all right if they have a float at the end.
Yeah, have something at the end, yeah.
But I, I think that for Susquehannock Centennial, it deserves a little more recognition than.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking, you know, about having a separate parade, but I don't know how that would go with a parade in July and a parade in August, so.
Why don't you combine, you know, what you could do is just thought, but you know, you could combine the parade with the Fourth of July parade? But you could ask people to enter floats and they could pick maybe one of, call it five topics, like maybe the old timers baseball thing and they could have, S Y C could maybe do that with all the kids and stuff and have the old time. And then you could have another one for the cannery, what used to be, you know, what they did that. I, I'm just saying, you know, just a thought. And you could have like maybe five at the end and then give them a prize based on which one's the best or let the crowd vote or something like that.
You could make it the theme for the thing.
Get all the participants involved.
You could make the Susquehannock Centennial the theme for the Fourth of July parade.
Yeah, that would be ideal, I think.
Yeah, cause it's.
My humble opinion.
Cause I, um, I talked to the Heritage Council also. I was talking to some of the people that were involved in that and we were talking about things they could, what they would, might do. Because I wanted to get anybody that wants to do something, I thought, I said, anybody that wants to be involved can. I said, anything they, they come up with that they wanna do, I mean, it's gonna be appreciated because that'll just make the whole thing that much nicer.
Sure, yeah. So, you know, maybe put together a casual schedule.
Yeah, I would say the, the recommendation was, was not in favor of an additional one, but, um, item number eight on the recommendations was the New Freedom, uh, New Year's Parade. Uh, next year's parade will be in honor of New Freedom Susquehannock Centennial anniversary.
Yeah. That's what I'm trying to remember how Mary Ann, what she said, but.
That'd be great. That'd be a date on the calendar then.
Yeah, that'd be something I can, I could almost chisel out in this house.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it, it's, it's definitely, uh, very elaborate, but if you'd like to see what another borough in Pennsylvania did for their Susquehannock Centennial, if you go to Lansdale Borough, uh, Lansdale Borough, one hundred and fiftieth. Uh, now they're a borough that's over near Philadelphia. Um, but they planned basically quite a few months over where they did different events throughout the calendar year to kind of celebrate, uh, their anniversary. So it's, it would give you a good idea of what others are doing.
Yeah, cause some of the, sometimes you have a little, you know, you look at different, some things and they're totally impossible. That we, it would take us ten years to plan that one out, but, but, uh, yeah.
Give me some good ideas.
Yeah, you said it's Lansdale.
Lansdale Borough, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, they're a little bit more, um, they have more money than we do.
Yeah, it's, again, it's, it's, I think.
The idea is.
Set the bar way up there, but it can give you an idea of, of how they organized and what they did.
And the other thing is to get the historical stuff from the centennial, you know, fifty years ago to see what, there had to be some planning going on there. I'll take you go in peril of that.
No, that was huge. I remember that.
Yeah, that was.
All, all week.
Yeah.
Have you been in touch with the ladies auxiliary at Fire Company?
That's something I gotta talk to, cause I haven't talked to them because I, I wanted to get the Fire Company involved too, you know, cause I'm sure they would wanna do something for the.
Right, well, they've got a lot of pictures up there too that I think you could probably get reproduced of the old fire station down on Front Street, the old ambulance, which was originally the hearse, Martin Stein's hearse that he.
Yeah, he did that a lot back then.
Yeah, yeah.
Coroner and Undertaker and that.
Yep.
Yeah.
So there, there is not a Susquehannock Centennial Committee that's independent from the borough, is there? I mean, is this it?
Yeah, cause we're not, cause we're not independent or, cause we didn't organize one like that.
No.
Oh, I didn't know if there were some other group doing something.
Oh, no, no, no. The only, the only ones involved would be like, like the Rec Council and the Heritage Council and.
I, I, you know, I think what you need to do is just pull something together that is doable. Like, you know, maybe it's a week, maybe it's, maybe it's once a week or four weeks, four different days in a month or something. You have the parade and then you have three other days where you do something, but, you know, just pick what you wanna do. Take a look at that, um, one borough and then figure out.
It's gonna be a long weekend.
Yeah.
A really long weekend, yeah.
Cause I know, uh, I, I talked to Mary Smith, who was the postmaster.
Right.
And she's on the Heritage Council, like, you know, she, we were talking, um, and that was something we had discussed. She and I discussed was on the fact of having a whole, you know, weekend where you have several things that run into each other.
Sure.
Shouldn't run into each other, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know.
And, uh, because that's, that would be nice to be able to have things like that, have like a, have something and then have something work in conjunction with it afterwards.
I mean, uh, Freedom Green, if you could have Brodsky's Band maybe down there. Susquehannock Band, you know.
See, that's who we were talking about, the.
And then have a projector that's showing all these pictures through the years on the wall. Like they do when they have movie night, you know? Yeah, Marlin's Wall, I guess you could still do that now that they painted the, the crest, the borough crest on the wall. By the way, if anybody hasn't seen that, that's beautiful. Turned out great.
Okay, let me, let me know if you need anything.
Four of us have already started growing the beards.
You're sorry?
Four of us have already started growing the beards, cause that plays into the centennial, right?
There you go, absolutely, there you go. If I could grow a beard, I.
I'm way ahead of it, I think.
Uh, council chamber audio and video improvements?
I cannot get them to call me back. I have a.
I, I would.
I have a quote of a price from this to this amount, but I.
Well, what's the best in the best?
That, that's just it. It's very vague as to, this is the equipment you need and it could go from this to this. The camera could be three hundred dollars or it could be seventeen hundred dollars. I, I've asked them to please narrow it down to specific equipment.
Are they, isn't it the room here?
We did, um, a, um, a Zoom meeting here, showed them. I took pictures, I took measurements of the room, I sent it to them. And I did get, I, I can't even really call it a proposal because nothing's broken down. It's just very general. But I called him today and said, look, if you're not interested, just let us know. You're not gonna hurt our feelings if this is too small a job for you.
We were in our meeting with the wastewater treatment thing and we had our tables here. And it would have been ideal for like when John was presenting or when Andy was showing us numbers, if we would have had a screen or even something to project on the wall or something to make it into this, into more of a training room. And I know, I know thirty thousand dollars scared us off to do this, as the whole thing, the right way. And I've talked to Brian Schweitzer, or Brian at Shrewsbury Borough. Did I say his name right?
Yeah.
That's it. Um, and, you know, he said what they did there was kind of, you know, patchwork. They did, you know, they, they're, they're still updating it and stuff, but, you know, I mean, I think we need to figure out what our vision is for this room and get it done because there's times when we can actually use it. I mean, even for, well, we don't have very many people, thank you for coming, we don't have very many people here tonight, but, you know, if we had more people, having the screens up would be helpful, um, you know, things like that, so.
We have laptops that the borough owns, correct?
I'm sorry?
We have laptops that the borough, one that the borough owns, that's it? We only have the one?
The rest are desktops.
I mean, it's not that hard to get a couple of TVs, mount them on that wall and plug that camera into, you don't even have to plug it in, it's Wi-Fi. That camera's Wi-Fi capable, it could put it right on there.
Can you do, can you put that right on the internet from here?
Sure.
Okay, so that's.
Absolutely.
Something I have to figure out.
But you, if you're looking at training or like you said, you're, and we, you've got, you've got two projectors here. With that laptop, you should be able to show that right on the wall, correct? And do a Zoom and right on the wall?
If.
I mean, we did it for training on here.
With the projector, yes.
Yeah, cause we have two projectors, correct?
Well, one's the police department and we have.
Oh, you borrowed that and then we have the other one, cause that's the one that we use to do.
I have a screen that I'd be more than happy.
We have a screen here.
I'd be more than happy to donate it, I mean, it just sits in the basement.
Yeah, we've got one right over there.
Okay.
But you got a white wall there, I would think all, that's all we did, we showed right on that wall. You have to lower these lights, but.
Why don't, um, why don't you see if you can get something out of them for next month and then, if, if we can't, I think we need to take, take a different direction or find a different company.
Has to speak to the manager.
He is the manager. See, this, this doesn't go through Best Buy. It goes through a separate department that they have for this kind of stuff. You know, it's not the Geek Squad that comes in. They do large, large buildings and corporations, companies.
I mean, they can't be that far away that they can't, I mean, we're close to Baltimore, we're close to York. I mean, they should be able to send somebody in and give you a, uh.
I could even get them to send somebody in when we did the presentation.
So are the other boroughs around here any more advanced than we are? You said that.
I think, sure, I think, uh, Shrewsbury Township is.
So we could maybe talk to Shrewsbury Township, find out who they got or something like that.
Well, that's part of their whole, their new building too.
Yeah. Yeah, they're actually.
Cause they're selling their old one, right?
Yeah.
We buy their equipment?
Oh, didn't they just buy new camera?
I don't, I see about it and they had a high score. It's quite a camera, it's pretty empty.
Yeah, that, I know the guy that's over in Shrewsbury that was the audio video director over here and he worked with him to do that. I forgot about him, he lives in Shrewsbury.
It wasn't.
He did it for Airford, he did all the audio video.
And then something like that.
And we want to do that as a class project. Maybe somebody at the high school would come in and, you know, we could, you know, let them buy the equipment and, uh, install it and that could be a class project. I know they have a lot of, um, AV type stuff at the high school. I don't know if it's an actual class or if it's a club, but.
I think that's who does the, um, um, there are meetings, isn't it? There are.
Oh, probably, yeah.
Board meetings.
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, the superintendent.
There could be like a small scholarship involved, that could be, I mean, we have to be able to get it done nicely for, you know, a reasonable price, so.
It, it, in looking at it and their, their proposal, it doesn't take a lot. Where it runs into a problem is you almost need two people to operate it if you're gonna do what Shrewsbury does. Cause Brian's on the board there with sound and he's doing one camera and Nate's there and he's got the headphones on and he's doing another one and, you know, that's a problem too.
Yeah.
You didn't need anybody doing that.
It would just, if I'm talking, the camera points at me. If you start talking, it swings over you.
Yeah, I have a camera like that in my house. We're all talking, which is usually what happens. Yeah, yeah. Let me, let me get on them one more time. Um, hopefully he'll call me back. I'm hoping that, you know, his number's not getting blocked by my AT and T.
The York Borough Association, that's over, sorry to interrupt that. Uh, any public comment?
I have a comment.
Okay.
I'm public, right?
You are public.
Two questions. One, Andrew did, the, the boys cops getting tough at you about the little library thing that we're gonna have at the park? Know that, what's called?
The free library?
The free library?
Yeah, they were to put it in, uh, it was, it was in August.
So they, you, you already know where that went?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we picked a spot out, made sure we didn't have utilities in the area, yeah, all that was.
Perfect, okay. So I know that the, um, the new bookstore donated the other, the other one that named Hopkin takes care of and so, so there'd be another, always fun to see if it was in place and would.
Yeah.
The other thing is, is I guess, maybe it's not something I should bring up here, but a couple of weeks ago, my house got egged. Do I just call the police on something like that or do I?
Did you say egg?
Yeah, I mean, it got a lot of egg, but it's enough, it was a pain in the neck to clean off.
Yeah.
So I don't know if there's, if I, I guess if I call the police, it would make some sense if there were, if it had happened other place and there'd be some sort of a systematic thing or something like.
I would, I don't know what you're gonna get out of it unless you're gonna turn it into your insurance company. That happened to me.
Well, I cleaned it, I mean, it's done.
See, yeah, if you, what you should do is do it, get them to come down, take, or take pictures of it because I had the same thing, only they used rocks. I mean, they actually threw them through my siding and into the, um, um, into the insulation and it actually made a hole in my inside wall. That's how hard they threw it. And I guess they were trying for my windows and missed, but they broke a whole bunch of my, my, uh, my siding, you know, vinyl siding. And the police came out, I had a report. And because I had a report and pictures, my insurance company covered, well, they gave me money back because fortunately I had additional, um, siding in my garage. Cause there's no way I could match it up, but it was, it's been there probably sixty years, so you can't match it up. Uh, but I did get some money out of it, so anytime something like that happens, pictures, police, report, and call your insurance company.
All right, I don't wanna belabor if I just got there.
That's, you think that was just wrong place, wrong time? Who's mad at you?
We're all sitting at this table here waiting to be anywhere with people that are mad at, you know?
I've got, I've got four debts in my car from somebody.
Do we have an update on this roof for this building?
We had a pre-bid meeting on Friday of last week. Uh, we had three contractors, the pre-bid meeting was not mandatory. Uh, we had three contractors show up at the pre-bid meeting. We had another contractor show up today. Their requests for information are due on, um, Friday and bids are due on October sixth.
Good.
So that gives Warehouse enough time to review, make sure the bids are sufficient and that all documents are included for council's review and a recommendation overlooked in for the October seventeenth.
Are we okay right now with some of the temp repairs that have been made?
Yeah.
Uh, I have one public comment for me, cause I'm also a public. Uh, anybody on this council who wants to meet with me, to talk with me, needs help, wants to bend my ear, whatever, I extend that to you. Mayor and I, I'm sorry, let me just, I'll just finish my sentence. And, uh, I know the mayor and I work well together on a number of other issues. I mean, you know, there's no reason why this council can't come together and be a cohesive body to help everybody in town. So I, I'm offering that. It's all about, it's about, it's the best I can do.
Sometimes it's good to have somebody else to bounce ideas off.
Absolutely, yeah.
See what sticks.
Yeah, I enjoy your ten o'clock at night texts.
Yeah, but you answer me, I.
I do, I'm usually on.
I, I email and I don't expect people to answer them, that's the, that's the thing.
Yes, sir.
Uh, right on, North Constitution Avenue. The question on North Constitution Avenue from Main Street to Mann and Parker. The question on North Constitution Avenue from Main Street to Main and Parker is, how or what can we do to reduce the speed limit? It is now getting known to be known as the Indy five hundred Raceway and I've even had people tell me, you couldn't pay me to live on North Constitution Avenue.
Thank you. Um, do we have our speed limit signs in yet?
Speed limit signs are, but that's a state road.
They are in, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, radar speed sign, yes, yeah.
Did you let Ryan know?
Yeah.
Cause they can't put them on the state road?
Yes.
Don't ask folks that.
Yes.
Like everybody says, they're doing, it's twenty, uh, thirty-five, they're doing fifty, sixty. If we take it down to twenty-five, they said, we might be likely to get them down to forty, forty-five miles an hour.
Well, what, what Andrew's saying is it's a state road.
I know that.
Yeah, I don't, what can we do?
Complain or stipulate the radar speed signs.
Okay. We, we have, uh, the mayor worked with Shrewsbury Borough to get radar speed signs that we could put up. They're, um.
I think they just came in.
Yeah, so we could put one up on North, North Constitution and it might, it might help, so. It's a, it's a one way to slow traffic down.
Well, like they said, we're starting to get children on there now and people are concerned.
I'm sure, yeah.
And there are no sidewalks on that road as you get out farther, correct?
What's, what's speed limit, twenty mile an hour between Railroad and Shrewsbury now?
Twenty?
That's thirty.
Pardon?
Yes. I don't think there's anything under twenty-five.
Well, it goes, the North Constitution goes up to what, forty miles an hour as you go out towards.
Once you pass Weathersfield, it goes up to.
Forty?
I think it goes up to forty-five.
I was gonna say, try to stay under fifty coming down that hill, yeah. You're right, Ray, and I will, I will talk to Chief also to see if there's anything he can do with maybe stationing a car there every now and then. That will dissuade, as soon as they see police on the side of the car, they tend to slow down. I know that's what they had done out at Weathersfield. They pull in there sometimes and just sit and do their paperwork or.
Officer Hattler said he didn't force me down.
I used to have my mailbox.
Weathersfield, right there at the.
I used to have my mailbox on the other side of the street and my children, they moved it over to our side, got permission to, they didn't want me crossing the road. Well, last August, one day when I went over to get the mail, from the time I left our sidewalk, go over the other side and come back, fifty-three vehicles went in and out.
Wow, yeah. Okay, well, we'll do that, we'll put the speed limit sign, talk to Chief about getting cars sitting in there and, yeah, and let us know, you know, next, next month, we don't know how long it's gonna take.
Like I say, a lot of people on Constitution are concerned about it.
Well, they should be, yeah, I would be. Okay, thank you.
Andy? Um, did, did Andrew, did you, did you get that on when I was talking about the alley? Cherry, I mean Cherry Alley right up back on my place there? Did, were you gonna put that on the agenda for next time to talk about what, what we could do about that alleyway?
For October's meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, cause what, what, what Ray's talking about too would all enter into, enter into that, you know?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Okay, I would hesitate a motion.
I will move.
Call the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. My vote is aye. Thank you, England Danny.
Yeah, thank you.